....................................
Time now is 6:31, and we're opening up the March 15th Planning Board Meeting. Roll call: Mike Ahern Chair, John Randlett Vice Chair, Melinda Bishop, Paul Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, and alternate Bob Dragon, and we will seat Bob Dragon for the meeting.
Who's that?
We will seat you for the meeting.
Thank you.
As a voting member. Brings us to item number three, public comments. Okay. Item number four, administrative matters. We have an application for voluntary lot merger, PID 208-046 and 208-047, Fairgrounds Road, Renhaer Electric Cooperative. It's RSA 674, semicolon, 39-a, voluntary merger. It does not require a public hearing per se or a notice to a butters. And Wilson, representing the Co-op today?
Yes, my name is Peter Phipps. We would like to consolidate the lots that were in the plan so that we can initiate our planning process in the future utilization of both processes, one parcel, one consolidation. And at this point in time, we're really, it's really very early in our planning stages. We just have to start that process with those lots as a, as a, a blank slate. If we have to answer any questions, assuming that RSA, unless there is a violation of existing subdivision regulations, at the, uh, 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 as it were.
Chairman, is there anything you want to say?
No, the planner overview is not even really a report. It just speaks to the sizes. This was formerly Fairgrounds Village and Taylor Community Homes. Those never manifested, and Mr. Prescott subsequently sold the land to the Electric Co-op, so it's their prerogative and privilege as owners to merge these two lots, and there's no zoning issues.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Wilson?
No, just for clarification, but I think I under-- this is really the old Fairgrounds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
It just needs sign off, so.
Do you need signatures?
I need your signature, but just a motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We have still some discussion.
Do, are we going to need a motion that the application is complete, I'm assuming, first?
No, because it's a different type of--
Then would we want to open it up to the public? Would the public, anybody in the public, like to make a comment on this?
Well, I agree with the utilization of that property, the urge to, to support that.
So just a motion to approve the-- approval application?
I don't think--
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. There was no question. I was going to move that we accept the merger of these two properties.
The proposed merger, yeah. Proposed merger.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the proposed merger. We have a second.
Second.
Second of Mr. Kelly. Abos in favor, signified by sen. I.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we have a, we'd be in the store on that. Thank you.
And before we adjourn, Mr. Truman, if I can get your signature on this, that'll be perfect.
Okay.
On this actual paper here.
So that brings us to item number five, correspondence.
Uh, no.
Okay. Assignment, reports of committees. Let's go to Conservation Commission. Mr. Wilson?
There is nothing to report, Seaman.
Zoning Board of Adjustment?
They did not meet last month.
The Lauer and Sewer District?
Nothing to report.
Penitentiary Office Local Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly?
Last slide I did go through, the meeting, uh, meeting, uh, council, and they gave me, uh, this report, so then I, uh, who is it they can, basically, they just, they just, they didn't, uh, a conservation, uh, committee said, and everybody else said, uh, they didn't change anything.
Okay. Pull up Regional Emergency Management Committee, Mr. Roach.
Nothing to report.
Town Planner Report?
Number two report.
New business discussion on update to the master plan. You want to bring us up to--
Well, I just want to make sure everybody, for the last time, I think I've hit everybody. Everybody has a copy of that implement, excuse me, implementation plan portion of the master plan with the goals and everything that you're supposed to be looking at to get your opinion. Because that's our first step, is seeing where we need to update.
You're talking about the--
It's page 21 through 40, something.
Did you send that out to us by email?
No, I passed out physical copies.
Okay.
So, does everybody have--
I'm sorry, page started.
Because that's a, that's a little bit--
I want a mission statement, Charlie.
Uh, no, the mission statement correlates with that. That just kind of speaks to why we're doing this. But I'll show you, I think I have my copy.
When did you pass?
It's about 20 pages, and--
Sharon, how long ago did you pass that out?
Well, honestly, I don't remember. Couple, maybe a month ago, or so, at least.
This is still available on the town website, though, right?
Yes, you can pull it off--
So you could get it off the town website and--
Yeah, I gave the flood plain, can I have your copy got pulled up?
This?
No, pause. I gave you an extra copy of that today for your flood plain--
You did?
Yes, I did.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. Sorry, you could scribble on that.
Model ordinance, local approaches, implement it yet?
Yes. This is what, it's in the master plan, but it's pages 21 through 46. Okay. All right, well, I can get your copy, but if you'll see, there are the different chapters in the master plan, and it lists holes that were put forward the last time this was updated, and then a timeline for these holes to be accomplished. I think that's where we need to start, to see where we're at in the master plan, see what's done out the door, and then we can help narrow down what we need to look at. And then we can start with our subcommittees and start fleshing out the, uh, the process for it. So if nobody has one, then I guess I'll take--
Ms.--
Show of hands on who--
Ms. Bishop.
Yeah, I just have a question. So what you're asking us as a board to do is to review these, and once we review them, shouldn't there's something that the subcommittee be working on to, to change or make?
Yeah, no--
So I don't, I'm just asking you why we, do you want us to review this prior to having a subcommittee brought together?
I would like everyone's personal opinion. I mean, I want everybody to be literally on the same page in terms of what's, goals were out there that have been accomplished. And then I would also like people to just start thinking about, do these goals, are they obsolete? Are they untenable? Are they not implementable? Did we already do it, but we don't realize we did? Just to get some feedback, so that when we start getting our subcommittees, I mean, yes, we'll go through the whole, um, master plan formula, but I don't want us to waste a lot of time on stuff that's either been done or was, you know, was something that interested the town seven or eight years ago, and now it's either obsolete or off the table or whatever. So I think we all literally start on the same page, and it's just a free exercise. It's not, you know, there's no test. It's just your opinion, and, and the institutional memory that I personally don't have, because I haven't been here through the last update of the master plan, and it just, it just will spark some conversation. It's just, you know, reading, and it'll familiarize everybody with what you thought, you know, you were going forward with last time. Just some like reading.
Is it really well that we could, like, assign each member a certain section of that? For the local board?
Sure, I mean, I thought that would be the--
Get the whole--
Well, I thought that would be the next step.
I think you can almost, um, tones it, read certain parts that--
Make notes.
I don't think you have to read it word for word, maybe.
I mean, I would just--
Everybody would be a little bit different.
There's not, there's not as many chapters as there are members, so I just thought, at the outset, everybody could--
Right. And there'd be some people on the planning board that may want to be on the subcommittee. There may be some that kind of sit out a little bit. I know that the, when we dealt with this six years ago, there was the sediment of the people that were looking at the management plan of it, that, you know, this is a pretty good document, and probably doesn't have to be reinvented, but let's for this committee now to reassess that assessment from back then, see if we still are thinking that same way or not.
Exactly.
And so we're at the beginning stages right now.
I think the zoning is going to be one of the, the thrust that, 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 the, the whole makeup of the plan has changed, so that the, you know, some of the zoning has been eliminated.
Well, the economics certainly have since the last time, so it'll be interesting.
Moving on to item number eight, unfinished other business. Discussion of Town Council's letter to Mr. Harry Blacky regarding site plan visiting what, Mountain Dew Farms, and the next steps for drainage over, over, overview issues.
So, just for background--
Section vesting.
Um, yeah, vesting, it's okay. Mr. Blacky presented to us, I think it was January, for a second time, and, uh, we went back to Town Council, Attorney Radigan, who reviewed the additional information that Mr. Blacky submitted, and I did give you all a copy of Attorney Radigan's message, which essentially says absolutely no, that site plan of Lot 44 with the condominium, uh, projections is not vested. So that approval has expired.
That's the hillside, right?
That's true, yes. And in addition, after the last meeting where we discussed this, Dick Lewis and I did some digging, and the alteration of terrain permit has also expired, and, uh, that permit was garnered under less comprehensive stringent rules at the time than the rules that are existing now. So, um, at some point, we're going to have to, I have, I've conveyed the decision to Mr. Blacky, and I also sent him a copy of, of Mr. Radigan's letter. So at some point, maybe this group needs further discussion on it or whatever, but we have to make some sort of, or you have to make some sort of recommendation to Mr. Blacky, and, um, you know, give, give a final vote on, on the site plan vesting, because it has expired, and our attorney says it's not vested, so in my book, that says it's not there. If he were to bring it forward again, he'd have to do, you know, another application, another alteration of terrain.
Before he did, he wrote that there?
Yeah, there's been absolutely nothing done, that's why it was not vested.
Right, right.
And also, you know, effectively look at it now in conjunction with the other, the other projects that were occurring in that area, such as Plymouth Woods.
And the drainage.
Right.
So, is there any more discussion on this at this point, then?
I'd, I'd like to know who are the responsibility of the town, and, and what the responsibility of the various neighbors there and Blacky begins, because if he's done everything right, then that's one thing. If he's not vested, then we can stop him as far as, or at least to discuss it. But as far as the neighbors are concerned, I'm not too awfully sure as to whether the town should be still involved in that or not. Uh, because I think that would be a civil matter, actually, in Blacky.
Well, I think what John's referring to is the drainage issue. We had the vesting, the approval expiration on one hand, and then related, but separate, was the drainage impacts from whomever, whatever, once again, perhaps the cumulative effect that our town engineer's been looking at. So, that issue, I, I think we need to deal with separately, and, and we had mentioned, you know, doing a timeline and a schematic and plugging in who did what when, and then seeing that. I, I know that, um, from my perspective in the town hall, um, my boss and his bosses don't foresee a lot more money going to unearth any more information on this, because it is becoming a civil matter. We've done our due diligence. I mean, John can speak to that, but, uh, other than tying up some, some loose ends to help perhaps point an option to the butters or something, but it's, it's not this board nor the town's responsibility. It's not.
Mr. Randlett, would you like to talk about your visit that you had, or anything more on the subject?
Uh, I really wasn't, I really wasn't prepared to, but, you know, I think it was myself and Ray Gosney and--
Dick Lewis?
Yep, Dick Lewis. Uh, and then we had the Pattons and a couple of the other neighbors. We did the lot, you know, looking at, you know, looking at what, what had been done. Uh, I mean, you could see where there were alterations made that would run everything from, from Crescent Street on to the pond.
Okay.
And then, you know, they just basically went over, you know, what we saw in the, in the video, the DVD that they gave us, where the flooding took place, and what was the lady's name, further down?
Mrs. Nelson, Janet Nelson.
Yeah, Janet Nelson, across her property. You know, you've got that natural swell that is there. And, and one of the, one of the things that I noticed, and, uh, really haven't, I've been out of town and really haven't had time to go back and take a look at it, is where some of that water is, because further down, uh, I guess the state put in a culvert under Fairgrounds, which goes across to one of the neighbors, and, I mean, their field floods. But the Nelson's, um, swale was dry, yet when you went down to the next property, water was coming through there, and, I mean, it was, I mean, some of it, some of it was coming off Fairgrounds, um, but some of it was coming from someplace else, too, that, that was coming across and going, um, going to the people over there on Fairgrounds.
Chris Woods?
Yeah, Chris Woods. Going, going to their property, and, I mean, that, that floods it every time, and, uh, that's going to be, I would imagine that would be a state issue with the Department of Transportation, why they, why they, I'm sure they, they had run over, just like they had further down by Fort Al, and the snow melts and everything that comes off the southern side and goes into that, that little wetland area.
We, we had mentioned, excuse me for interrupting, but perhaps at our next work session to sit down with, now that we've done this investigative work, so to speak, as a lawyer and a town engineer, and getting all the pieces and just visually, maybe a flow chart, you know, this occurred here, this was done, this should be, maybe recommendations, blah, 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 which I'll type up and distribute, and then, in my opinion, that's kind of the end of it, in terms of the board's responsibility, certainly from a legal perspective. But, you know, a finished product to show to people, just pull together--
Now, to tie one loose end about any civil matter that might be going on, that would take care of Plymouth Woods and what their drainage plan that we had approved?
Plymouth Woods really doesn't--
Because what they, what their drainage plan shows is probably not the best solution now, knowing more information, and if we had, no?
No, no.
Their drainage plan, their drainage plan adds no--
Right.
--additional flow--
Plus it mitigates--
To what is what was happening when, or before that was even planned.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is no additional effect on any of the property--
I was just concerned about the drainage that goes underneath the road to Mrs. Nelson's property, whether that was--
Well, that may be, that may be looked at with the state. I mean, there's, there's different components--
They haven't built it yet, and that's was my concern, that--
Well, what we've done is, we've, we've, uh, illuminated some facts, we've crossed out some issues, some attributions, and we've taken a snapshot of what's happening currently, and I think we're going to put all those pieces together, but again, Plymouth Woods is, it's good to go. I mean, they're actually, once again, doing, they're mitigating on Page Street pre-existing drainage runoff, so they're good to go.
All right. Next, Mr. Kelly.
Do we, do we have something from our legal counsel and also the town engineer saying the town has done everything right? So that if, if we get into a civil matter, and they should come back and say, well, the town should have done a, a certain activity or project or whatever, I don't want to be bound in a blackboard that the town didn't do anything. If we had the legal counsel and the engineer saying that the town has done everything that is humanly possible in, in carving the plans and everything like that, and if the plans were sufficient, such as a six-inch water pipe that goes underneath the road, so that if it gets into court, whether we're going to try and back into it?
Well, I mean, I--
We seem to have these all kinds of ends that can out there, you know, and--
I mean, I could, I could run that protocol by our town attorney, but, I mean, my first answer would be yes, the town is covered, because anything that required huge hydrology in that neck of the woods, Plymouth Woods aside, because that's, that's good, and we don't even want to talk about that, has not occurred. And now, um, any development out there would be under different scrutiny, more stringent scrutiny, because they'd have to go back to DES and get another alteration of terrain permit, so it's a whole new day. I mean, the protocols were followed, the six-inch drain, I mean, Mike says that was okay for what it was supposed to be, but that, that's not--
Do we have a piece of paper--
No, we don't yet, but we can get one.
That I can say, this is it, and not just we hope or we think or we pray or, or whatever, but maybe we're right?
I know what you're saying, and I can hopefully get our attorney to say, this is not a town. This was, whoever did whatever on that property that owns that property.
When you say, I hope, hope that we can get that.
Well, I've got to ask him first, John. I mean, I'm not clairvoyant, I've got to ask him. I, I believe we can, because I think we've done due diligence and all our ducks are in a row. I think so. It looks hopeful.
I agree.
Looks hopeful.
I agree, I have a very low, it was something else he's--
Yeah, okay, I will, I will talk to you.
Move on to item--
Mr. Chan.
Yes, Mr. Roach.
Do we have to make some kind of motion to give Blacky an official planning board response, or has that been covered already?
We do. I don't know if you guys want further discussion at a work session, or tonight, it's up to the board's, you know, discretion. I, I, yeah, I think you need to do something formal, because he's come back twice to ask.
I mean, it's pretty clear from the attorney's letter and from Sharon's opinion that it's not vested. I just wonder if we need the planning board to say, make it official, or doesn't it be tonight, just whatever you guys think?
Well, definitely at some point you need to do it, for sure.
I say sooner than later, before it's dragged out, but--
Mr. Wilson? Would someone like to make a motion, then?
I will.
All right.
Make a motion that we take a vote or discuss wanting to have an official planning board decision on his vested site plan. Is that what it's called? Site plan vesting? Yeah. That makes sense?
Well, we'll have a second, and then we'll discuss it, and then we'll have a vote. Is there a second?
No.
Okay, Ms. Bishop second it. We should make sure that we have some good word and verbiage on that before we vote.
Yeah, so we have some discussion.
All right. Would anybody like to discuss the motion on the table at this point? Or do we want to just define what we're voting on real well first?
I'd really like some clarification of what we're voting for here, and somebody put this in language. My concern at this point is, is the, the people own property over there, how does this affect them through what we're doing here? Are their concerns going to be addressed through what we're doing, or is it, John? I don't know.
Which?
No, from what I--
We're back on water? No.
If you're bringing up the water issue, the people that have come here to Doug, but this is, I believe, unrelated.
It's unrelated, isn't it?
No.
To the people that were here, from the people living in that area.
Right. This is clearly his Lot 44 up on the hillside.
Okay.
Yeah.
The question that he had is whether or not he's vested in that, and it seems fairly clear, I think, to all of us that he's not, so we just wanted--
The subdivision is, and the attorney gave his ruling, so it's good to go on that.
Right, on Crescent Street and those lots in there, but not up the hill and what's--
If he were to.
Right.
But in terms of the 39 condominium units on Lot 44--
Right.
No, so he'd have to start all over again, come back before the playboard, board, because it's been--
Number four, it's way up on the side of the hill, is that this?
That's what we're talking about.
That's four, or did it hit the other lot, too?
The other lot, all of them.
It's everything.
So we need some really well-defined verbiage before we vote on this, because, can anybody put that?
What are you going to make?
I don't want to suggest the words themselves, but could it be something said simply as, we accept the recommendation of the town attorney?
Exactly.
That's what I would do.
Okay. Are we willing to, what's the word we're looking for?
Uh, Ghost Rider Kraft or--
No, he would, he's got a motion--
Accepted as a friendly amendment?
What's another word? To take his back, and we'll use that as the motion.
Resign?
Oh, resign, yes, yes, I would-- And Ms. Bishop, rescind yours.
Mr. Chan, could I have a point of order?
Yes.
I see Mr. Gardner's here, and he's a member of the board. I probably should recuse myself of letting him sit at the table.
Well, I think we made a mistake initially, putting you on as the seventh person, because we can't replace a select board member with just a general alternate, so with both of the selectmen at a meeting, we can bring, obviously, Mr. Gosney back onto the board.
Yeah, I'll sort of stand down, okay?
Okay. Mr. Gosney, would you like to return on this matter?
Okay. Who's on first?
Great, you've got a good one, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
You heard most of the discussion, Mr. Gosney, and I didn't know if you wanted to chime in on any further.
No, sir.
We have no motion on the table at this point. We've got some discussion on, um, Mr. Wilson, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I, I move that, I move that we accept the town attorney's recommendation relative to the status of this subdivision.
Okay. A second?
A second.
Mr. Roach, seconds. Any more-- Any more discussion on it? Okay, we are ready for vote. All those in favor of accepting the town attorney's recommendations as it pertains to Mr. Blackie's...
Vested site plan.
Vested site plan. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that carries and brings us to item number nine, public comments.
Well, I would like to ask about the copying of the master plan copy that I may be vested on and on the subcommittees. If I could get a copy of that. And I see you have some planning plans. Would that be a fair...
I don't know how much you got in your pocket for it.
Active participation as a public.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, the point is item number 10.
Oh, actually, not quite. But it's just paperwork. I have found that in our public notices, advertising in the newspaper for our different applications, the fee level that has been assigned, that's been around for quite some time, is not really covering the cost anymore. So I wonder if the board would consider... You don't have to tell me or vote this evening. It's at $45, and the ads, even the small ones, are running around 60 or so, so it's a loss leader. I was hoping that the board could... It's just an administrative thing, but I wanted to run it by you, so I could get dispensation to up that fee to $60 on the application from 45. So it's something to think about. That's for the newspaper notice on an application?
Well, we shouldn't lose money on that.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
I'd suggest that we maybe add a bit of overhead on that also, because it involves Sharon's time. So I don't want to blow it out of the water, but maybe...
$65.
$75.
Anybody else have a...
Makes sense.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Bishop.
You say to raise it because of Sharon's time. I'm just, can you clarify that, because she is an employee of the town, so...
Right, which is extra.
I mean, how does that work out to come to be?
Even if somebody's a town employee, if they're being asked to do something on behalf of some party...
It's administrative, it's shipping handling, sort of. Yeah, administrative overhead, a little bit.
So in fact, you could think of it not as reimbursement for Sharon, but reimbursement to the town.
Yeah.
Because it's taking away time that she could be doing in other planning activities.
Those funds actually go into the general fund, you know? So it's not a quid pro quo. It doesn't stay in my budget.
That's what I'm saying. It's not an envelope to Sharon. It's a payment to the town.
Right.
I need to clarify that, because it's just...
Right, double dipping. No, I know what you're...
Sharon is doing this volunteer, and she should be getting compensated for it. So just wanted that clarification.
So do you need a clarification from us today on what...
Not today, but it's just something to consider, because I've been just noticing over time, and that's just a normal occurrence, you know?
Mr. Gosney.
Just a question to give a sentiment, that's the right word. I think it would be helpful to take a look at the towns that adjacent to us and just ask what their current fee levels are. Just as an FYI, I don't know that it maybe comes into play in establishing ours, because the new lease charge should be cost-based. And it does make sense to not try to do everything every year or so, that if you do have an increase and something passes base inflation two or three years. It gets the builders and developers and everybody else accustomed to what that fee is. But I think it would be helpful if we could do some inquiries, just see what the adjacent towns are.
I think I recall, just off the cuff, and I will look into that, that we are very, very inexpensive in Plymouth. Not that we want to gouge anybody, but we have to make our costs, so I'll shop around. Yeah.
They have to use the same newspapers and everything.
I advise also going a few percent above what is now, so if it goes up in a few months, we don't have to then increase it again, too, you know? Make it 65 or 70 covers, you know, a small increase that might happen in a couple of months.
Can I ask a question? Thought maybe I might have an application to take a look at work return for certified mail items now.
Just $5, and those have gone up.
Certified, I mean...
And those are labor intensive.
We do want to return and receive your question, don't we?
No, we don't. No, just delivery.
And I think we should... I mean, I think at a minimum, whenever the charge that we pay at the post office needs to be, if it's $5.50 or $6.00 or whatever it's...
I think it's $2.65... Excuse me, $3.65. It's just gone up for certified mail, so that's a dollar and 45 cents profit. But I know it's handling paper, you know what I mean? It's a lot of paper going to the post office and whatever. It's just, you know, periodically, these charges have to be looked at, otherwise they sit on the books for 15 years at the same level, and you're losing money, so...
So we will try and have this possibly at our workshop?
Yeah. And I think we should, while we're here, maybe just definitely pass the word that we are having our April 6th work session. We've got a couple of things to look at, master plan and our schematic for the drainage issue and some other things.
That's what might be a good time to let the public know that the planning board possibly would be looking for some new...
I was just going to mention that we have two members whose terms are up and certainly love to have you back, so you need to approach me with a letter for the Board of Selectmen for a possible reappointment.
Whose terms are up?
You, sir, and Ms. Bishop.
Mr. Chairman, something you said made me think, too. I said adjacent towns. Perhaps it shouldn't be limited to those, because I think it would be helpful to identify two or three other towns that have a fair degree of activity. You mentioned Meredith, and I was thinking perhaps that we were also to do Lincoln and one other town of Sharon's choice that she knows has activity, just to get a sense of what towns that are busy.
Okay. Great.
Yep.
So motion for the table, item number 10. Okay, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay.